All right, good morning. I'm Dr. Doug Doudou, Chairman of the School Board, and I'm going to call a special meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, June 19th. I'm sorry, June 26th. Tuesday, June 26th. And the time is 9:02. So we'll call the special meeting to order, and we have our opening exercises by Sandy Counts.
And I have the morning prayer. Good morning, God. We're ushering in another day untouched and freshly new. So here we come to ask you, God, if you will renew us too. Forgive the many errors that we might have made yesterday, and let us try again, dear God, to walk closer in that way. But Father, we are well aware that we cannot make it on our own. So take our hands and hold them tight, for we cannot walk alone. Scan for the page.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and with soul with liberty and justice for all.
All right, board members, we have some things to add to the agenda. So let me add on Section 4, School Support Services. We want to add numbers 6, 7, and 8. That is for the approval of Molly Chandler as Assistant Principal for Old City Elementary School effective July 1, 2018. And then we're going to add number 7, which is to approve Amanda Haynes as Assistant Principal at Hernando Elementary School, effective July 1, 2018. And then item number 8 would be to approve Jamie Bays as Assistant Principal at La Canto Primary School. And there's not an effective date on that. Is that July?
July 1.
Okay, July 1, as of July 1, effective July 1, 2018. Also, under number 5, Attending Legal Matters, the ALIS Service Agreement will be added. ALIS Service Agreement, Mr. Ratchell. So is there any questions about those additions to the agenda?
I'm going to adopt the changes just now.
All right, motion by Ms. Powers, second by Mr. Kennedy to adopt the agenda with the changes just mentioned. Is there any questions or comments? Okay, all those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, being opposed. All right, motion passes 5-0. Very good. We will have a time now for citizen comments. Do we have any cards? No. Anyone like to address the board? Any citizen comments? All right, very good. Okay, we'll move on to item number 3, Educational Services. Mr. Hebert, Dr. Hebert, and to approve the Mental Health Assistant Allocation Plan.
Yes, I'm asking for approval of the Mental Health Assistance Allocation Plan. And Kit Humbaugh, the Director of Student Services, is here. If you want her review or sharing information with you on that plan.
Okay, Humbaugh.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I do have, I'm not sure what you were going to ask this far, but I do have a PowerPoint, just a general overview, if that would be maybe helpful. Am I going to be okay pulling out the USB? Is this someone else's that's in here?
Yes, they can come out. It's going to download it to the bottom.
All right, very good.
Well, this is good enough. If I may, I would like to introduce Gina Dickie. She's the new Coordinator of Student Services. Gina, this is our school board. And I believe you've met Mr. Ratchell and Ms. Himmel, and Mr. Dodd is our Chairman. And you've met Mr. Kennedy, Sandy Counts, Ms. Counts, Ms. Powers, and Ms. Bryant. And you've met Mr. Malin. Okay. Gina's the coordinator. She's me.
The new kid?
Yes. Gina's the coordinator. She's me.
The new kid?
Yes.
Ms. Powers, could you just get your microphone over and maybe ask some questions?
It's on, actually.
Just bring it down to you.
So this is just, basically what this is, is an outline of everything that is in the plan that you all received last week. The first part of it is the funding, which, what the plan is calling for is, with the money, is the hiring of two additional school psychologists for social workers, a student services specialist. And then other funding would be for professional development and the implementation of the mental health plan. So with the money that is allocated to us, 90% of it has to be spent on mental health services, and then 10% of the plan is on the implementation. The services that we have outlined that are in the plan are a universal screener for all students, a broad problem-solving team at each school, additional assessments when that is determined through a screener that additional assessments are needed on students, interventions and progress monitoring, interventions, things that we have to put in place when services and needs are identified and we are required, which we would do anyway, to progress monitor the success of the students and the assistance that they're getting. Then referrals for services, internal and external. Internal would be our school-based. For example, if a teacher thought that a child was, you know, displaying some behavior that maybe needed additional interventions, an internal would be what we have school-based. That's our school psychologist, our social workers, our school counselors. And then external would be those services when students are identified who need therapeutic needs, when they actually have like a diagnosis such as bipolar or post-traumatic syndrome, those types of things. Those would be external with outside mental health services providers. And then we plan on revising our Baker Act follow-up procedure. Currently, we follow up on every Baker Act, whether it's done in the school, on school campus, or off-campus. And the whole team felt the need that there's more to this instead of just one follow-up, that there's multiple follow-ups with these students. Threat assessment, we've had a threat assessment since 2005, a manual, that the team believes should be updated. And then the crisis manual. Threat assessment, crisis manual, those are things that are shared with the administrative teams every year at the beginning of the year. And social workers, school counselors, nurses, those types of people are all part of those reviews.
Ms. Humbaugh?
Yes.
I'm revising the Baker Act follow-up procedure. And you said that we follow up on either. It was my understanding, though, that if they don't get Baker, if they get Baker acted off-campus, we don't, the state or NOLED provides us with any information regarding a student that's Baker acted off-campus unless the family lets us be aware of that.
That's correct. That's correct.
And I would say this also to Chairman Dodd with your committee with Hartman. That's a problem, because we are only now having as much information as we are voluntarily provided. And we, you know, but yet, what we know is that the burden is put on the school districts. So I hope that changes. I mean, to me, there should be a way to have a secure database where that information is provided to you.
I do too, and I can't even speculate how many there are off-campus that we don't ever know about. We find out the ones off-campus by either a student coming in and disclosing that information, or a parent calls, or I don't know if it's the right process, but sometimes some of the school SROs will share that with their, with their school. Some SROs will not share that with their schools. When I came onboard five years ago, every Baker Act that was done off-campus was sent to Student Services, so we knew every single one. And then, actually, I hadn't been there but a couple of months, and that, that sharing of information stopped. So, you know, I really, I don't know how many there would be total, because we just don't get that information when it's done off-campus.
And that's something I think maybe as a board, as we start developing things for our legislative agenda that we talk with our legislative group, we need to ask that that's something we need to do. And I know we're not going to be alone in that.
And I will add, when we treat the ones off-campus, when we receive that information, just like ones that would have happened on-campus, we do the same process, you know, the follow-up monitoring, all of that. It's just that the follow-up procedure, that there, it needs to be a little more on a continuum, that we don't just meet one time, that that student is still, you know...
Right. Let me just interrupt here. And I know Mr. Ratchell might have something to add too on the threat assessment team requirement, though, that's in Senate Bill 7026. Now, that's going to require the sharing of information between agencies. So my question, I guess, is how are you going to ensure that we're getting that information? Because it is going to be available. It is going to be available to be shared with the school district through the threat assessment team. So, you know, that's something that we need to make sure that we're followed up on. Now, Mr. Ratchell, do you have any ideas or thoughts on that as far as how you read that to Bill?
I mean, I haven't really gotten that to work with somebody else.
At the very least, though, locally, I wonder if that could be put into the contract, that that's shared information.
I would, that's true.
Because, I mean, I mean, of information that they have and...
I'll read the threat assessment part.
Because the other thing, too, is if a student is transferred from Marion County, from what Mr. Dodd said, we should then be having that information.
Right.
But if we don't know they've been Baker acted, you know, two years earlier, and we need to be monitoring that or providing services or follow-up, we, you know, we're not going to have that information.
And sometimes, I think it's going to be that, those agencies that we are really the only ones that we can depend on to get that information. We did add it to the behavior screening, which is a form that is completed when students first enter our school system. But it's a parent that fills out that. We have added what was required for, has your child ever been Baker acted, you know, mental health issue, et cetera. But if they choose to not give that information accurately, they just, you know, say no, 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 then we don't, we don't know about it. Some parents will disclose that, many of them don't. That if we had that from like law enforcement or, you know, mental health agencies, that, you know, from other places, it would be so, so very helpful.
Yeah, we require it actually by statutes, what's coming down now, to have that information and to act on that information and to follow up on that information.
Right.
Because that's a requirement on us. We have to have that information from something else, and that's our problem. So we do need to have written in some sort of contract that this information needs to be provided for us to do the job that we're told we have to do from the state.
I'm looking at the threat assessment part of the list, multiple agencies for sure. So that's probably going to be some type of a local, a local party. Because it's talking about juvenile justice, law enforcement, school districts, Department of Children, Department of Health, there's a whole lot. So probably doing...
But this is, this is, though, where we want to talk also to legislators to say that we can't be just dependent on having that information shared. There needs to be some centralization of a database or something.
I agree.
Because, you know, with all the best intentions, if that information isn't something that can be popped up, I mean, we would not expect law enforcement to be dependent on having their own database from Citrus County, separate from Marion County. We can't do that if we're going to be, you know, doing what we're tasked to do.
Right.
Well, and you have to realize that, you know, the Baker Act is a temporary intervention. It's not meant to be a long-term solution for mental health issues. And that adds another component to this, because if a child was Baker acted two, three, four years ago, they may not, I mean, very possibly, they could be over the event that took place to cause them to be Baker acted. And just because a child is Baker acted, you know, up to 72 hours is what the law allows them to be evaluated for, and most of them aren't even close to that. But, you know, that doesn't mean that two weeks later, something else could happen. I mean, you know, it's really, but what the Baker Act is to address the issue immediate at hand. So I think the challenge for us is going to be, how are we following up on the Baker Acts? And at what, you know, what point, I mean, how are we keeping track of mental health issues? The mobile reporting app that's going to be required, it's going to be forced down upon counties to react to issues of threats is going to have to be addressed. And I know, you know, we've talked a little bit about that. We don't have a clear picture of how that's going to come out yet. But this is important stuff that we have to make sure we're followed up on, we're staying on top of. And I agree with Mr. Kennedy, there still has to be some things done legislatively to make sure there is follow-up and there is a record and a sharing of that record so that we can, you know, do what's right for kids.
And the information's not shared. It's like the bug stops there. The person not sharing is responsible. And it's up to us for us to be able to act. Maybe there should be something, you know, we say, well, we don't have any information to report that. It needs to be, it's not defined well.
Yeah, and I do think it is going to have to be something legislation-wise. And, I mean, it's not that I don't try to get that information. The DCF is almost just, does not share information.
And I think that's going to change too.
And, you know, from when there's an intake and things like that, even with Baker Acts. I mean, we don't get follow-ups from the centers or these other, or these other facilities that take, you know, take them in, which personally, I think that there should be, I think Mr. Dodd said that, like a central location where we need that information. We don't have to give every little detail, but just to know, you know, this is a student that you need to keep your eyes on. So hopefully, that will change, because it's very much needed.
Ms. Powers, do you have any, I had a couple of questions, but I know you had brought up some things at first. Do you have anything else that you want to ask now, or...
I just want to be sure that in some form, that information is shared with us and it's written into a contract or a agreement or whatever, but it's solid, that we should expect information from the agency, from some group that worked with the student. We need the information for us to be able to do our jobs. If a student is Baker acted for trying to hurt himself and that sort of stuff, and he comes to school, which he can, you know, next couple of days, I should know that I should keep my eye on this student, because he has tried to do this. But I have no information.
That's exactly right. And there has always been talk about the sharing and FISFIN of somebody at a district having access to that. That's the whole network that shows, you know, the things, child abuse and all of that. And it just never seems to go through and to get done where they give that access, you know, to just even, you know, one central person in the district that can be looking at that information.
I remember reading an article, Mr. Ratchell, an article about attempted suicides in the county of Hernando people, and it had this number on it. And I went to my notes, and I have this number. It was, my number ever since like 87. The number presented in the paper was like 187. I said, what? You know, when is this? Where do these numbers come from? But it's because we didn't have shared information. We knew nothing about those who were not inside a school system.
Right.
Who had been Baker acted, attempted suicide, or hurting themselves and stuff.
And we keep track of that, you know, on our report, but that's what I mean. That off-campus Baker Acts, that's not exactly accurate, because we don't know of all of them. Right.
All right, I've got a question in regard to the credential versus license. Now, I know in your plan on page four, you talk about the credential, credential mental health providers employed by the district. But yet, I found not all of our social workers are credentialed or licensed mental health.
They're not, and they don't have to be.
Right. So, but it said, then the next paragraph says, "With the mental health allocated funds, the school district will employ the below-credentialed staff to provide mental health services to students." So they're not all credentialed though, are they?
Well, they're credentialed from the standpoint of what the state would require for you to have a school counselor. Like for a school counselor, they have to have a master's degree. A social worker, they have to have a bachelor's degree. And they are credentialed in terms of providing the services within like a school. Maybe that's not a good word.
But they're not licensed, are they?
That's the difference. No. Licensed would be like a social worker who goes on from a bachelor's degree and gets their master's degree, and then takes the state test. They become a licensed clinical social worker. Those people can deal more with what we call therapeutic services. Ms. Powers and I had this conversation. Those are the ones that, like, they've had a diagnosis, they're, you're targeting and trying to provide an intervention for a specific mental illness, so to speak, that a student has. That is not what the school counselors, the social workers are trained to do. They deal with mainly tier, you know, kids that have some problems, and then tier one, tier two, maybe some tier three, you know, some, some mental problems, but not anything that has been like therapeutic diagnosed. Then, when it gets to that point, that's when we need the outside services.
And the outside services basically are the centers and the Children's Home Society.
That's correct.
And yet, we've heard a lot of issues with the centers in that county. So what's the, what does that, what is your view on the centers and what they offer us?
Well, I know that they are restructuring. I met last week with the supervisor of children's services. And she has told me that, you know, they're coming up with a different plan. There's a new director, he's actually a medical doctor, and that they have a lot of different plans, so to speak, to put in place. It's just been inconsistent. The services that they've provided have been, you know, they've been acceptable. It's just, they've had so many changes that when things change, I feel like we're out of pocket for a little bit of time of not getting services that we need from them.
So, my, only to set up my question to Ms. Himmel is, and I know the county is looking at the contract. And if that changes, that impacts us on this end too. Is that correct?
Well, and after the county appoints, if they're, a ground company appoints someone else and moves the centers and get someone else, and that's who we're going to deal with. So, Ms. Humbaugh, you speak of that, remember, they're just like everybody else. They've lost millions of dollars in funding, and I think they're trying to do more.
I do, and this supervisor, her name is Diane Giammarco, has been by far the most, you know, attentive and, you know, just really, really trying to get some things together. And when I met with her last week, I said, you know, I need to know that if we have referrals that need to be done outside of the school, that you can provide those services and that you can come to the school to provide those services. And she has assured me that's something that she's going to be working on. We're going to, probably in another week, to reconvene after she talks with them with the funding. It just seems like they hire a bunch of them, and then something happens with funding, and then they're gone.
And now, for us to have, like, why can't we have more providers? They just, they have to come to the district and, and contract with the district. Or, you know, we have two providers, the centers and Children's Home Society. But if there's other providers out there. So my question is, are we really meeting the needs because we're so limited with who can offer services?
Well, there are others that I'm working on, like Families First. There's a therapeutic place that's out of Ocala. I think it's the same one that is contracted with SERMI. But I've always felt like, and I think most agree, that we have to be very careful having contracts or, you know, contracts, MOUs, et cetera, with private agencies. Because I think once you let a private agency in, then they all want to come in. I mean, you can't really discriminate. The agencies that we deal with, like the centers, Children's Home Society, Families First, there's a couple of other ones that are out there. We don't have a lot of resources in this area, but they're all grant-funded. They're therapeutic or mental health services that are not private, so to speak. You know, where they, like, some of the private ones, they have, there's like an umbrella, like the person that is maybe the licensed mental health therapist, and that person has these other therapists working under them, like, under their, you know, degree. Same like with our school nurses. Like an RN, the LPNs like work under their, you know, their umbrella.
So, if a student gets preferred to, say, the centers or Children's Home Society, who's then, how does that prepare, let's say, payment-wise or funding-wise for that student to receive those services than it would some of these other agencies or the private agencies?
As far as I know, it's the same. It's billable services, primarily, I mean, the majority of them are Medicaid. Some of the agencies, like the centers, they bill for private also. Like if somebody had Blue Cross Blue Shield, or Children's Home Society is primarily Medicaid. I'm not sure I'm...
No, no, that helps.
But even a private agency is the same.
I see what you're saying.
I think the difference, though, is here is those providers can come onto our school campus to provide mental health fields, but other providers cannot. Other private providers. So my question is, might it be better to have it offered to, I mean, in this world we live, to have any... to have any licensed provider that wants to provide services and have a contract with us? To be able to come on the school campus to give mental health counseling to a child?
One of the problems that you have, though, is that you're going to have to enter into an agreement with every licensed provider, there's purpose, customer record, confidentiality, all the rights. What ends up happening, or me and Ms. Humble talked about, talked about is when all the licensed providers want to come to do all their therapy at the school because the parents will take their kids to their office, which disrupts the school day, takes them out of, you know, the classes that they're required to take, you know, or to graduate or to do a rest and grade, it's great. So that, I mean, there's, it's, yes, it would be nice to be able to have all these folks come and do that and serve their rest with them for once. But around that there are inherent problems with having that. Because we've had, we've had this problem and had this one, you know, not argument, but, but issues with, with, with private providers because they don't want to sign the contract or, you know, what they really want to do is they want to work in practice in the school system. And that's the only thing, and I, because I, I see both sides of that. And I know we've dealt with some of those issues. But then I also am struggling a little bit with what Mr. Dodd's saying, not against you, I'm saying agreeing with you, is how's that different from the centers? I mean, if we're going to have to provide the service, is the center's going to have that same scheduling issue that, you know, that a private would have? Where they're, they're wanting access to the student during the school day? I see exactly the issues, but I'm not sure that we're not going to have that same issue with, with either agencies. I thought, and maybe I was wrong, that because they were more grant-funded, that the cost of services in a community that had seventy percent of our kids economically disadvantaged, I thought there was maybe a benefit that they would provide services that, let's say, a third party wouldn't that was dependent on insurance billables that may or may not take Medicaid, for example. And I don't know if that was issue, because that to me would be a, you know, a big factor. I'm referring a child and the centers will take any child and this particular agency will only take ones that take Blue Cross Blue Shield or something to that nature. That would concern me. I don't, but I don't know that I-
And I can't say for sure that they all do take Medicaid. I know at one time that some take Medicaid, some do not take Medicaid.
And that is a concern because having been at the council and speaking and knowing that a person coming in taking Medicaid will have access because the payment's guaranteed, and then a person needing a private service, no, because payment's not guaranteed. So there's an inequity there. Medicaid people usually can find someone because if that's paid by Medicaid. Private, not so much. And also there's a philosophical difference too of how a therapist approaches the student. If you're looking at a group, say like the centers, you pretty well have a handle on the philosophical approach they have to work with the kids. If you're working with, and I used to work with a person who was in private practice, they might have twenty different approaches, twenty different philosophies. So it's much more difficult to get track of them and what they do. And you want to know what the philosophy of the group that you are bringing in is.
And I, and maybe I didn't explain that well before when I was saying people working under someone else's license. And it's exactly like what Ms. Powers is saying. I mean, they have maybe fifteen counselors working under their license and I don't know how much, it could be all these different approaches of, you know, what their philosophy is. Where I know that that doesn't exist at the, you know, like the centers, Children's Home Society. It's very consistent with, with how they treat the students.
Also the private person coming in, they've scheduled that hour or I think they could go by fifteen minutes, but they also said the hour they've scheduled to come in and deal with that student. Now they walk in and a couple of years ago, you had the FCAT. Do you think that child's going to be able to get on the FCAT to come do a therapy session? Will not be able to do it. So they have to go by the school's schedule, but then that hurts them because they expect to go in, quite honestly, professionally go in and work with a child. So there has to be some sort of compromise, some sort of schedule meshed together to be able to do it. And also there's the consideration of payment. Because if I, if I'm there as a counselor and I say, "Well, I would like you to go to Dr. So-and-so," I just committed the school system to pay that person going to Dr. So-and-so. So you have, you have to be aware of that. You cannot just hit one person and say, "Go to them." You can provide a list. I know Ms. Humble has a list of people that are in the community. None are suggested over the other, but the list is given so people can, for themselves, root out what they would like to do.
Yes, it's just a mental health list of providers. And it has a disclaimer at the bottom that, you know, for a parent's convenience.
But through all of it, I can say, and I've worked with kids many years, through all of it, as difficult as it can be to select what you want to do, it's done and it works. And the kid, and the people in the school system, Sarah, y'all do it well. You face all these difficulties and still you do it well in the children's services.
But I wanted to ask this on Ms. Powers' comment though. Just because we contract with the centers and a child sees the centers, the school district's not obligated to pay the centers?
No, I'm talking about a private provider or what?
Yeah, well, I'm, what I'm saying is with reputation, the centers is not being that strong, in my view, and with only one other opportunity, Children's Home Society, is I would like to see the school district have more providers contracted so that students could have the ability at while that school to be involved with another provider. They obviously have to meet a contractual agreement, I agree. I mean, Mr. Bradshaw, obviously that's going to take place. It's going to have to meet our standards, but that's just my opinion, so I just, I just wish.
And I, and I don't know that, I'm hearing that we're, I think we all would agree, more providers are a positive thing. What I think it is, is, and that's what I thought was going on in Citrus County, we have a limited number of providers that, that meet, let's say, the centers and the Children's Home Society's criteria without having to go to Marion County or Hernando County, is that correct? Is, in Citrus County, other than centers and children's home society, is there anyone else that, that we are not providing, that we are not contracting with that would meet that same level?
That could be mentioned, I don't think it's, it's a talent.
Families First?
Yeah.
That's, but they're in-
I think they're based out of Marion, but again, I'm sure they're receiving funding. I think that these are, are agencies that we could get a contract with, like Families First. I've been working on, and I know she's working on a grant, is Melissa Bower-Master from Jesse's Place. She and I have met several times and that is about getting a counselor, mental health therapist, in each one of the high schools, like on a regular basis, to come in. You know, it would be a referral. She does the billing, she does, I mean, she would do all of that. Because a lot of the needs for there, students need to be seen there, but they don't get down to there. So we have felt like if they can come in and do some of that in the school, you know, like we had one, one day a week at Citrus High School and one day a week at Chris River, maybe, you know, the middle schools as well, but focusing on secondary. I guess like with everybody, it's just kind of waiting on the funding and, you know, what's going to be available. But yes, there are other providers that we can certainly reach out to and have Mr. Bradshaw, you know, look over an agreement with them that would fall under that, that more of a grant-funded type group of people.
And then with good reputation, good referrals. And if Mr. Dodd is correct, and to correct, we need more of the guests.
Because if the county does replace or have another agency that does some of the services that the centers does, that would potentially be another one. It may mean to lose the centers too. So we may just be trading one name for another name, which will necessarily add more, which, which I think we want to do. And, and, but I, I mean, I agree, I think we do need to add more. It's just a question of where are they?
And I know Ms. Humble can look at the education qualifications of those people who are added to be sure that they can provide the services we're looking for, that, not just the counseling services, the like level one, but they can provide therapeutic services. That they're qualified and certified to provide therapeutic services.
Right.
The other question I had on the plan is with the trading on the mental health, we're not trading for all school district staff that's going to be offered, that's new training for staff. Can you kind of expand on that a little bit for us on what plan is there?
Yes, you're way ahead of me, Mr. Dodd.
Oh, I am, I'm sorry.
No, I'm teasing, I'll do it now.
Continue on with, well, I'll wait to get to it.
Okay, I'll just go through these real quick and then, because I'll have to keep shifting back. The data collection is part of the, our plan, is part of a requirement. We will have the, like when we do screenings, the students that we see, that information will all be kept internally in Skywork. And then school reporting, referrals for, like when teachers, you know, make a referral, like maybe a student needs to be seen, or when we make referrals for outside services, like external, we will have that within like a, like an Excel database where, just so that we're keeping track of all of these students that are receiving services. Collaboration is of course what we've been talking about. We're going to have to establish some more MOUs. Primary care providers are just, again, you know, agencies that are, are local. And then we do plan on having a agency committee meeting. It was, it's the belief of our group that to get all of these mental health providers together, like everybody that has a say. I mean, it can be, you know, DJJ, just all of the agencies that we come into contact with regularly, just for us to, to meet with them, to go over what our plan is and what we need from them, the expectations, et cetera. So we plan on having that right about at the beginning of the school year. We've not set a date for that. Professional development, mental health awareness, is this where your question came in, Mr. Dodd? Last year, we developed, as most of you know, a, we did several staff developments. We had positive school climate, we did mental health awareness where it was presented to staff on the varying degrees of mental illnesses, from very minor to, you know, to others, like from anxiety on up. And this year, what has come down from the Department of Education is a couple of things. One is they are supposed to have a overview of the whole, like why we have this mental health plan now, things that have happened, et cetera. An overview that is supposed to be to us, to the districts, before the start of school, which is like a fifteen or twenty-minute overview to go over it with staff. Then they are developing modules that will be online for teachers to complete. Like three sixty-minute modules. I don't know, was it like two or three of them, Sarah, that they were talking about? Okay. And that's the Department of Education. However, those probably won't be here until like December or January. So what our plans are, and we're, this is something that we're working on, is for us to continue that mental health awareness piece with staff while we're waiting. We don't want to wait till halfway through the school year to address or readdress what we started with our initiative last year on mental health. Then crisis threat assessment, that is professional development, that again, they do the reviews, but we've got new assistant principals, we have new counselors, et cetera, that we've got some professional development to do with those people as well as reviews. And then youth mental health first aid is what the, the Department of Education is recommending slash requiring from districts. However, they don't have all of that in place yet. Mental health first aid is a all-day training, eight-hour training where staff is trained. And then you are, you've had mental health first aid. First aiders that you see up there, those are, it's like a cadre at your, your team, at your school, that will be trained in mental health first aid to be like the overseer of, of mental health. I'm probably confusing you, I probably should back up. Let's say there's two people at each school that are first aiders. They go through that eight-hour training and they are, they've had the training, they can, you know, share some of that information with the schools. As a district, we have to have or need to have probably ten, maybe a little bit more of youth mental health first aid people who can actually train people. And that training takes like three days for you to become a certified mental health first aid trainer, to train these two people that the state is going to require at each one of our schools. So we're waiting on dates for that, it's not set up yet? Yes, Sarah, do you have anything else to say on that or?
No, just that we don't have the dates yet and that. We do have like youth mental health first aid training plan for all the school nurses. And I know some of the counselors, psychologists, and social workers have jumped onto that training that was planned for the nurses.
Right.
So we will have some first aiders, but we need trainers.
Right, and there are some slots available for that. And there are quite a few people in the district who have had this training. They've gotten the training through NAMI or just a variety, SEDNET of sources, but it's not something that everybody at a school has been trained on. It's nearly impossible for a whole staff to go through an eight-hour training. That's why they have opted for the first aiders, the two primary people at the school that have gone through the training to have the knowledge and share it with their staff. Not train their staff, just share the information with them.
And when we went to Tampa, I went to one of the breakout sessions that was the Sandy Hook Promise.
Yes.
And I made contact with the father of the victim that was killed. And he shook his hand, but that's free. And so I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to leave you with all of this.
Oh, good.
They'll come and they have programs for your middle, elementary, and high school and your teachers, six to seven hours for your teachers. And they cover exactly what we've been talking about, the social isolation, the threats, the mental illness behavior skills and things like that. And it's free because of the foundation from Sandy Hook. So I'll leave that information-
Oh, that will be good.
Something else that we need to bring into the county.
And that's one of the resources, the website or something that was shared with us at our, the training that Sarah and I and several others attended for two days on the coming up with this plan, that was one of the resources.
It is all online, I brought you hard copy.
Very good, thank you.
And then Blair Friedman is, is in charge of the state of Florida and we contact her for dates. But I'll tell you, it was a very successful breakout session, so we need to call her and get online. There's, it's a, it's a program that's worked in many other counties.
Okay.
And after all this training is done, someone's going to do that ten hours or eight hours where they almost need de-escalation because it is almost overwhelming. And you walk out of your room into the hallway and suddenly everyone in the whole hallway has a problem. You go, "Let's fire everyone immediately." So it needs some de-escalation afterwards.
Yes, yes. Did you have another question about that, Mr. Dodd?
No, I'm good.
No, that's good, okay.
Well, I have another question.
Oh, how about those who work with us, say maybe someone in the, an SRO, let's say an SRO, are they going to receive some training to be able to see what we see or know what we know or from our viewpoint, be able to understand what we're dealing with? Will there be some training that is approved for them to receive or no?
This statute, the SROs now have additional training. They qualify as a-
So they'll, they'll be learning some of the very same things we are, so we'll both be on the same page.
Anyone who's going to be a state school officer for SROs, school safety officer, regarding that's a traditional.
Oh, God, you should do it, do it. I don't know that it says specifically though, and I'm not sure if that's what you're asking, who provides that training to them.
He does.
Mr. Bradshaw?
He says, who provides it, I think by the coordinate.
It just says, undergo criminal background checks, drug testing, and psychological evaluation. I do think they have to test.
Would you check on that, because if we're coordinating, we'd break, we're both taking the same thing, know the same stuff, everything goes rapid, if you did that.
And then student education is mental health wellness, awareness and understanding. We're looking at some different pieces of curriculum for, as you know, we do have, like, Sanford Harmony that is, like, K through six, but also some things we're looking at for, for older students. Just an awareness. Many things that I've read are that there are signs often, like, the, there's a good example of the situation in Texas, that when they talked with students that knew that football player, that they looked back and said, you know, "I saw those things but didn't know that they were signs." So not like that we want kids to be out there looking for all these signs, but just an awareness, that is one of the things that's not necessarily required by the department, but it's strongly recommended. And just, you know, just some little things. It could be things that are positively posted around the schools, it could be a comment that's made, like, in a homeroom, you know, a circle time where kids are just talking about some things. So that we are taking a look at, you know, before we rule that out to give it to the schools, but that is definitely something that we want as part of the plan. And then I put Aspire up there, they're doing a, a group of students, working with a group of students at La Canto High School this year for a youth, youth, mental health first aid, where they're actually going to train some of these kids. I guess it's a new program, but as of right now, it's just that, it's like a pilot that they're doing with La Canto High School.
When we were down in Tampa, we saw a film, all of it solid, and it was called Listen, telling people to pay attention to other people, to what they said to take in and evaluate it, if something looks wrong, act on it right now. And there were several children whose lives were followed, and you could see how their problems or mental health problems were progressing.
Right.
They're, maybe it's something we want to look at with the teaching. It's a movie, right.
Just now, we're showing that movie for our administrators.
Oh, super.
Because it would show it, so it's, you know, it's all acid, and then we'll see what we want to do. Because he's got the proportions, of course, for that.
That's good, and because the movie did give you a lot of information to say, hey, we want to need to refer it right now, you know, so it's good.
And we'll take, from the meetings too, I started to think, because we were inundated with stuff, and I started to think, well, we require physical education, and maybe as we start to develop curriculum, and especially with the Aspire group, because they help a lot with our health classes, that I started to think, why don't we require a curriculum and require the kids to take mental education, just that we have the physical.
Physical education.
And so I'm thinking that we could need to be hook that curriculum, probably very easy to do, and we have some flack from parents who are interfering with them, but I think it's something that we need to consider.
And, you know, I know we've kind of talked about before, Mr. Sheffield used to bring it in, but maybe it's a good time to have the River Project or somebody come back in, because I think some of that's incorporated into that, and it'd be, yeah, Aspire does have that, and it might be something to just have them do on a workshop day or something, just review that, maybe they can talk about what they're looking to add, or.
Sure, I'll make a note of that and speak with Carrie Pierce. I'm sure she would very much like to do that.
All right, are there any questions?
Thank you.
And now, we need to have a motion.
I'm with the mental health assistance allocation plan.
All right, motion by Ms. Crouch, second by Ms. Powers, to approve the mental health assistance allocation plan. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes five to zero. Ms. Humboldt, thank you for coming in and putting this time with us, and just thinking what you best in your position. All right, item number four, school support services, this one.
Good morning. Ask the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Goldenrod.
Looks like we had some people that got their teaching certificate in and are moving to the teaching field, that's a good thing to see.
Move that we approve the personnel operation and support staff as recommended by the superintendent on the Goldenrod.
Second. All right, motion by Ms. Crouch, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve instructional support recommendations on the Goldenrod. Are there any questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
We currently have 44 instructional positions posted, and some of those that are posted are in the, the administrators are in the middle of hiring for them, but they don't like to take the position down until the person has been cleared, and we have 19 support positions posted.
Of the 44, of all the ones that the teachers have, with, how many of that are working on right now?
I do not have that exact number. They come in throughout the day, so maybe, I would say, right now, we have 10 or 15 that are in the process.
Okay, all right.
I'm not that would when I say this, that's actually seems pretty good for this time of the year.
Yes, compared to the last few years, yes. I feel like that's a good place to be, and they're calling every day for hires, which is a good thing. Okay, second item is to ask the board's approval of the 2018, 2019 market adjustment for administrators. As the board is aware, the market adjustment for teachers for the three years was approved last year, and so this year, it is compare, it is based on the number of days for administrators. It comes out to $6.12 a day for teachers, so it would be the same for administrators based on the number of days.
Move approval of the 2018, 2019 market adjustment for administrators.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Powers, to approve the 2018, 2019 market adjustment for administrators. Is there any questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes five to zero.
Number three is to ask the board's approval of the 2018, 2019 administrator placement schedules. We have one for both school administrators and one for district administrators. And the reason we need to increase the placement charges is because of the market adjustments. We want to keep that competitive.
I move the approval of 2018, 2019 administrative placement schedules.
Okay.
All right, motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Crouch, to approve the 2018, 2019 new administrator placement schedules. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes five to zero.
Number four is to ask the board's approval of the updated job description for school social worker, and Kit is here as well, if you have any questions. There was one change from the previous copy of the job description, which you have in front of you, and it is number 10, and it says to serve as active members of the school intervention teams and problem-solving teams associated with crisis, threat assessments, mental health, and attendance.
I'm assuming that's partly due to 7026?
Yes, that is correct.
Move approval of the updated job description for social workers.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Crouch, to approve the updated job description for social workers with that change that is waiting for the motion. Is there any other discussion?
I'd just like to compliment you on the clarity of the new job description. Very nice.
Thank you to Kit as well.
Any other questions?
I think you're working on two, the bachelor's degree in social work, as the social workers come in, encouraging them to go on for a master's, settle up.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Number six is to ask, I'm sorry, number five is to ask the board's approval on the new job description for food service maintenance foreman, and the board has a new copy. We did change the area of supervisors to besides the journeyman, kitchen equipment mechanics, all other assigned personnel, so if Mr. Costini has other personnel that he feels needs to be assigned under that person, we will be able to do that.
All right, can you tell me that one more time, that's different from what we have?
Yes, in the previous one, it said supervises, journeyman, kitchen equipment mechanics, and we added and all assigned support personnel. So if there's anyone else that Mr. Costini feels needs to fall under our maintenance foreman, he can assign that person to them as well, or that employee.
The fact that they already had somebody they were supervising probably put them, is that where the ineligibility for certain things regarding, like, true time issues Like, a head custodian, I'm thinking, does not, I think, super, directly supervise anyone, is that correct? So this person would already have not been eligible, let's say, to be a teamster or something of that nature?
Mr. Costini? They will, they, Mr. Costini will still do the evaluation, and that person will still fall under them as far as, as far as true time? They will, as, with regards to supervision, I feel that it will still be the work, they will supervise the work, then if there are any concerns, Mr. Costini will handle the concerns.
Yes, regarding evaluations, they will add input to me when we do their evaluations.
Okay, okay, and that's similar, I think, then, to like a head custodian, then?
Yes, sir.
Where they're not directly doing the evaluation, then it's actually done, and that's, and that's not changed, because you just are adding others to you, instead of having two people, you might have three.
That is correct.
Down the road, if we would have asked somebody way down the road, we would not have to come back to the board and change the job description, or it's just that specific journeyman. If we added a helper or something like that, school district continues to grow, this person then will, again, assume that supervision of that individual as well.
And where on there is this again, I still don't see it this way, on the change? What number?
It says supervises.
Okay, so this is a performance responsibility.
Okay.
I mentioned, I was looking at performance responsibilities. Okay, very good, thank you.
It's the hundred pounds that could be deployed.
If we have to lift any type of refrigerator, sometimes those canisters can be very heavy or anything, I mean, our guys lift a lot of different equipment, if we have to move a piece of equipment, they have to be able to somewhat lift that and move it. Usually they get help, that's why we have two guys, but we definitely have to.
For two, and one.
We have some strong guys.
Yeah, and they have to be extras, and they have to work in wet cold, hot, freezing conditions, that's not enticing, but.
All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve the new job description for food service maintenance foreman.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Powers, to approve the new job description for food service maintenance foreman. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Number six is to ask the board's approval to, for Molly Chandler to be named assistant principal at Floral City Elementary effective July 16, 2018.
Move approval?
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Bryant, to approve Molly Chandler as assistant principal at Floral City Elementary School effective July 1, 2018. Any discussion, comments?
Great choice.
Your contract date will be July 16.
This, yes, Ms. Crouch had a question there, July?
Her contract date will begin July 16.
Okay, so effective July 16?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, either one.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Crouch. Okay, any other questions? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes five to zero.
Ask the board's approval for Amanda Haines to be named as assistant principal at Hernando Elementary School with an effective start date of July 16, 2018.
I move to approve of Amanda Haines as assistant principal at Hernando Elementary School effective July 1, 2018.
Second.
All right, and now, I think we're seeing July 16, though, is that, is that what you said, Ms. Crouch?
Yes, yes.
July 16.
July 16.
July 16, okay. Is that who you, you answered, okay. Ms. Powers made a motion to approve Amanda Haines as assistant principal at Hernando Elementary School effective July 16, second by Ms. Crouch. Is there any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes five to zero.
Retired Nancy Haines just screamed somewhere.
Number eight is to ask the board's approval for Jamie Bays to be named assistant principal at La Canto Primary School with an effective start date of July 16, 2018.
Approval of Jamie Bays as assistant principal at La Canto Primary School of July 16?
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Crouch, second by Ms. Bryant, to approve Jamie Bays as assistant principal at La Canto Primary School effective July 16, 2018. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes five to zero.
And they wanted me to let you know that they would have been here today, but they are at the strategic planning day, so that is where they are planning for next year.
Okay.
I love the phone sheet, it's really clear.
All right, Ms. Crouch, thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is item number five, our attorney, Mr. Bradshaw, in the Alice Service Room. I put my place down there for Ms. Crouch. Okay.
As you know, we've been moving forward to become an Alice-certified district beginning in August at our school sites. It is an enhanced lockdown procedure, and the process we had gone through was, we had a sampling of administrators go through some initial training, who felt this was a very good program for us to be part of, we took it to our safety and security committee that Mr. Dodd's a part of, and then we have a shade session with you all, and maybe more detail on what the Alice lockdown procedures would entail. So we are coming forward now, asking that we move forward with the master service agreement to keep moving in the direction and to become an Alice-certified district in August. Any questions?
Can you do, okay, will you?
The Alice services agreement.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Powers, second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the Alice service agreement.
It was a three-year.
Three-year, is it a one-year or a three-year?
We don't.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And the sheriff's office involvement, as far as can you share with the board a little bit about what's going on?
Yes, I had an opportunity to meet with folks from the sheriff's office, to share with them how we felt about this. We had already initially mentioned it to them six weeks ago, but I met with them in the last couple of weeks and told them where we're at in the process, asked them their feelings on it, and they endorse it as well. They're, they're on board with this, and they'll support it and assist us with this.
And we do have always, one of the sheriff's office, after the safety and security meeting committee, which usually Sergeant Frank, but I think at the last meeting, you had, you were sure that?
It was Lieutenant Farmer at the last meeting. Ron was not available to attend, but Ron has been involved in these discussions from the onset, which started two or three months ago.
And of course, we know that they have to be an active part of the drills that we did in this program, and this is an established program that has a good track record, and I think, Mr. Bradshaw, from what you've read over two, I think it was good with contracts, and this is the recommendation of Ms. Crouch, right? And we all, I know we've all kind of looked at it, and had a chance to talk to Shay about some of the issues, but we make sure, you know, the public knows that we are going to meet the requirements of the Senate bill and exceed those requirements in providing drills and protection for our students on campus.
And I'm supportive of this very much, but Mr. Dodd and I, and maybe some of the other board members, went to a training in Florida School Board Association. It had. other board members, went to a training in Florida School Board Association. But I don't know whether these are competing products, whether they're complementary ones, but you saw that.
We were.
Yeah, and I just didn't know.
Safe plans, and I know Ms. Searns is aware of that, and her assignment was too. And we may, I think there's been some discussion on some of the things that they offer, safe plans as far as school planning. But as far as the active shooter training, what's going to be in place, it is a little bit of a different, I mean, they.
That's what I was.
Yeah. So we will be going with the Alice. They use that alert acronym. I think you probably see it, but it is real.
It seemed very similar and it just, but they did have some things that were interesting.
So again, I'm supportive of that.
This is research based, and there are steps we can take to become an actual Alice certified district, and we're going to take those steps.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Is there any other comments? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bradshaw, do you have any other items?
I want to give you an update on the SRO contract and other issues that are going. I had sent a draft SRO agreement over to the county, to the sheriff's office. County was fine. There were some issues in regards to the SRO contract. I had a conversation with their attorney. I think we've worked through most of them. One of the, one of the bigger issues is the providing of coverage during summer school. The sheriff sounded the impression that we had never mentioned summer school. We didn't know that they would have to provide coverage during summer school. And I think y'all can go back through and look. I mean, we had talked about a 10-month contract versus a 12-month contract. One of the biggest issues that came out of that was in March, when the altered effect, March 9th, and it was before, you know, or somewhere right around there, we had a board meeting. And the board voted to fund half of the SR, I think five additional SROs beginning June. I think that number kind of rounded out to roughly $96,400. In the month of June, the sheriff's office did not provide a full-time deputy on campus during summer school. And so I know a letter was sent by finance, and I followed up on the letter that I had sent to the sheriff's office saying that we were reducing the amount of the $96,400, excuse me, by $27,531. My letter said we'd be happy to pay for the time that was spent there, but because it wasn't, you know, they were there the entire time. I'll pass out an email that I got from their attorney on Friday, which basically says that the sheriff was, and you can read it, but the, basically it says that we don't pay the $27,500 to keep inside the SRO.
What?
Yeah, that's how.
Can you repeat that again?
Yeah, well, it says the outstanding $27,531 must be paid before this agreement will be signed.
This is a purely demand pending, is what I see.
Yeah. And I had a conversation with their attorney yesterday, and we went through this. And I think there's a fundamental misunderstanding in that the, when this board voted in March to provide, to fund a half of the five SROs in June, the sheriff has interpreted that to mean that that was for salaries, training, capital expenditures. And you can see that in paragraph two of the email to.
I'm just, by the way, reading in the minutes of that meeting where the motion was made by Virginia Bryant, made a motion to fund 50% for five new SROs beginning March 14th, 2018 until June 30th, 2018. It was seconded by myself, and it was approved unanimously. That was the motion, that was the second, and that was the vote.
Correct. So I.
So there is somewhere, there's confusion?
Apparently that that meant that we were going to fund five new SROs completely, half of five new SROs completely, which kind of doesn't make sense when we talked about having to have 22 come July 1, where we provided funding for 22 starting July 1. So anyhow, I'm kind of at a stalemate because if they're not going to sign the school resource officer agreement based upon the $27,400, I pretty much don't need to modify it anymore unless the board gives me some direction, which I would like to be able to.
Basically, this is asking for us to pay them for services never rendered?
There is the auditor general opinion was talked about, you having to, you know, provide some detail in showing what you're actually paying for. And that was in regard to an SRO contract, I think it was 2004 or '05, something back in there. They were not against us, but they, the auditor, auditors, you know, down to the district because they weren't keeping track of the SRO. Not necessarily you needed to do it minute by minute, hour by hour, but they didn't have anything in writing exactly what the SROs were going to do. And so they said, you know, they flagged before, they said you need to have something more specific, which to me means that you should, you can't pay for services that weren't rendered. That is the problem, is that I don't know if there is a number of how long that the deputies were going to buy the summer school locations and provide the services. But I do know that they weren't there from the beginning of the day to the end of the day.
It's interesting, in our motion following the, in our minutes, it says Chairman Dodd felt all campuses need to be covered, including AES and CREST, following the discussion the vote was taken in carried unanimously.
And then also, and one of the other issues that happened was the, is the issue of summer school. There is a, I don't want to say a position, but the sheriff is saying and has indicated that he knew nothing about us having summer school programs, that those didn't need to be covered.
But the motion was to provide those additional five deputies to the end of June.
I'm talking about for next year also.
Next year, yeah.
Because we brought them, providing coverage in July and having issues with that.
My conversation with the sheriff officer, Mr. Molly, Bishop, Costini, and Mr. Wilson that was 18, we talked about a 10-month contract and walked that up, where we pay deputies their hourly rate of time and effort for summer. And he told me that they need to go to a contract because they do work for us through summer. So that was where we left that meeting, knowing that you already approved that money, that they would be covering our schools in the summer.
What, what did you mention?
Correct. That was July 1 through June 30th, 1890.
When the, when the legislators passed, or when the governor made his recommendation of having one SRO on every school, before that was signed, I was grateful that our sheriff put deputies in our schools because of the importance of making sure there was a deputy on every school campus. I'm not sure what's changed.
Well, if you remember at the Board of County Commissioners, I think it was Commissioner Coleman asked me, what's assigned to you? Does that mean you have to have someone on campus? You know, basically, they'll, they'll, for lack of a better term. And I don't believe that's what the law says. I think that that's what the intent was, although it's not what it says. I know there are multiple districts that cannot comply with that. You have bigger districts where it will, it ends up being a situation where there's still at primary and elementary schools going to have, you know, one SRO per so many schools. Because you just, the numbers aren't there. Where you can have that many new SROs, you know, if you have to have 85 or 100 new SROs, you know, there's no way to have, to have that many people, you know, starting August 10.
Isn't that what we paid for was to say that we were going to ensure that we had deputies and replacement deputies?
Correct.
To ensure that high level of service?
Correct. Correct.
Well, how many schools, I mean, it's a small number of schools that actually have summer school.
Correct.
I mean, if we're going to have 25 full-time school resource officers in their contract, how many schools are we talking about?
It certainly checks a list, and there's some days that we need nine, some days we need three, four, or three days.
Nine SROs.
And if you want to talk about, what we had last year, last year, what we had 15 SROs?
We had 16.
16.
We basically run three elementary schools. We run our three high schools for Credit Montgomery, and then we have CREST as a summer school. They have it every year.
I know that, that, I've heard a comment that, well, we didn't know that there was, that we'd have to do summer school. We didn't know that we have to do any of this. This is, I mean, that's a change in the law completely as to, because prior to that, we've, we've been exceeding any of the mandates prior to 7026 going in. So none of us knew what we would be needing to do until 7026.
Correct. I was, that's why I indicated, I thought we complied with the law the day that it was passed, because we have been a very diligent in school safety and had already provided an SRO for every high school, middle school, and then for most elementary schools and primary schools, I think it was about one per three. And so I thought, my opinion was we complied on the day that it was passed. Summer school, I'm not quite sure if we had an SRO or whether that was assigned there during summer school. But I also explained that even if we didn't have the SROs at summer school last year, you know, everybody's working on their new set of rules now, right now with 7026, which has implemented that, you know, you at least have to have somebody assigned there and, you know, take that for what it means to have a change, something there for double, which I think is, which all of a sudden, I don't agree, that's the best option, you know. But I don't think that legally, I think, now, like La Canto, La Canto complex, we probably don't need to have this meeting out there. But we are putting one at every, at every facility.
And we're talking about two different things. The month of June, there really isn't a contract in place for what we're doing. There's an interpretation, one is theirs and one is ours. For July, Mr. Bradshaw was working diligently to try to get a contract in place for July. So we can treat this as two different discussions, get direction from you or.
Although I am having a kickback on the summer, September summer.
But you, but that's why I say in June, I mean, before we even voted on this in June, the sheriff, and I, and I respect the sheriff for doing this, the sheriff put deputies in the schools immediately. We didn't wait for a contract. We didn't wait for there to be. So, I mean, we've still been working through the end of the school year, though. We were still, we still didn't have a contract that changed from that.
Correct. But not during summer.
But I'm saying, but we still didn't have a contract for what was, what we were doing in March, April, and, you know, May and June. So I'm saying, so through, so at this point, there's nothing that's been different from the regular school year to now, whether we had summer school or whether we had regular school, we still didn't have a contract.
Well, we had the 78 in contract, we've provided for 16 SROs.
Which, which again, the sheriff had already exceeded on that.
Which ran, which runs through June 30.
And that's why we added the five.
And when the bill passed, then we needed five additional SROs for, I guess, you know? Correct. Now.
So that would, so that would be a total then of 21 SROs. So where are the 21 SROs from June, from when was schooled out?
May 25th.
May 25th through June 30?
Well, I don't think he had five additional SROs. I think that to, but in the spirit of safety, I think the deputies were providing.
I think I remember him saying he pulled them off the road.
Pulled them off the road, which was fine. I mean, that's.
But there was 21 we were paying then at that point in the, I mean, 16 in the contract or.
And half, and five additional paying half. I think the problem is the interpretation that that was kind of like the start of us going to fund those five SROs.
But from the end of the school year, we wouldn't, if we would have at that time said that, I think we would have made the motion then to end it at the last day of school. Instead, we did it to the end of June, which was the contract, because the contract goes until the end of that period of time.
And I want to remember discussing with the, with the P O C C, the concept of a 100 day teacher contract, school contract. And I believe he was insisting on a 12-month contract. He didn't want to work on a 10-month contract. I remember that.
That's correct. And I defended that point of view because of the issue with, you know, having an officer full-time is a 12-month person. So that we weren't going to have 10-month contracts.
So I'm a little bit surprised that he was the one that brought up that he wanted to provide them.
I think they tried to provide coverage, Ms. Searns, if you'll correct me, six, about 65% of the amount of time that we needed full-time coverage was actually covered.
At where, Mr. Molly?
For the month of June, in our schools.
Okay. Because that's what I was just going to say, because Mr..
We calculated the schedule about when they were able to provide coverage and when it was uncovered. And we calculated that, and about 65% of the time, it's been covered.
Because Major Lernhart says, Lernhart, Linhart, I'm sorry, said, we definitely, it was in the paper today, quote, "We definitely are giving the schools coverage for summer. We feel it's the right thing to do." I thought I was comfortable with.
I can interject in the conversation. Ms. Searns has been working with Major Linhart, with the sheriff's department, to come up with a schedule of coverage they could provide for the month of June and throughout the remainder of summer school, the summer school services that we provide. As Mr. Molly indicated, that the schedule that we were provided does provide coverage for upwards of about 65% of the time there. Ms. Searns is working with our school sites now to confirm what times the SRO or deputies have been on campus providing that service, because we thought that would be beneficial to the board in your conversations, as you're having about the $27,000 to say, well, certainly, I think the auditor general's opinion would have heartburn with us paying for services not rendered. However, they have rendered services, but we're trying right now to go through and come up with a very concise number as to what percentage of services have been covered, so we can provide that to the board, so you guys can have some informed conversation in regards to that $27,000. That seems to be in the way of the agreement that Mr. Bradshaw was proposing about this morning.
Well, it is, we would pay for the coverage, but it's only the right thing to do.
I agree with that.
It's just a situation of not providing full payment for coverage, for partial coverage.
I guess there's one sentence in here that kind of bothers me, and that's a sentence that says, "This is a mischaracterization of the purposes of funding and a petty argument in light of larger concern, student safety." I think they're missing larger concern. Larger concern is student safety, and that's what we want. And that's what we are funding, is student safety at all of our schools. So how are we mischaracterizing that? Are they wanting full-time SROs and then wanting us to pay additional for summer school? Is that what they're saying?
It may turn into that because the, we are still discussing, you know, I had placed in the original agreement that it was for the regular session and summer school, and they are taking out regular, taking out summer school. So with the argument that that two month period is when they're in SROs, make a comp time for working more hours during the school year, for when they get their training, for, you know, vacations, you know, the other things that they typically don't do during the school year because they're out of school five days a week. But the flip side of that is, in years past, we've had 16 SROs, and I think that included a sergeant, a lieutenant as supervisors, but now we're going to have 22. With still the three additional people as super, the three, the three supervisors, I don't understand why some of those votes can't, you know, cover some of these schools during summer school with other SROs while other ones.
Our staff has to do that all the time. We were always having to take our, our 12-month staff, using it to cover and do coverage for our tenant 11-month. But Mr. Dodd, agreeing with what you just, your concerns that you said, again in the paper today, the major was quoted as saying, the Florida Sheriff's Association's attorney has said that he doesn't interpret the bill and the law to be for summer schools and just for normal school session. Well, that concerns me to say that we're having a different standard we're going to apply for summer school kids than we are. apply for summer school kids than we are for our traditional school year kids. That, that...
I think that's a very...
That's a very concerning quote.
What, what article did you read?
It was by Reporter Zervis.
Who's sitting in the back.
And it's, I'll send you the link.
Well, I'm on the phone call, I'm trying to find it.
But my problem still goes back to the V O C C meeting, where he was talking about vacations and things like that, but the ten-month contract for schoolwork is only a hundred and eighty days. They have vacations at Thanksgiving, vacations at Christmas, they have spring break, they have three-day weekends, they have, we have professional development days every day for, every month for our teachers, when we train our teachers. So I still have a problem that, you know, he wants paid for twelve months. Even a ten-month is still only a hundred and eighty days with the kids in there. And we offered him one point one million, and it's not enough.
I'm just hoping, and I think that there's just some misunderstandings, because I really believe when the sheriff came here, his concern is to have a system that is representative as a model for the state. And I just am hoping that we're just, that's some misunderstandings.
Yeah, I agree. I'm glad this kind of catches me. Obviously off guard, but I'm a little surprised, because I thought we were all on the same page, and I thought it's a tale of safety and requirement that, you know, protection for our students on our campus. So, you know, I can understand, though, in some ways, as far as this year with the schedules and with plans that the SROs have already had, I think it's still a management issue, but you, did you say, Mr. Bradshaw, that going forward even into next school summer, or next summer, that it would impact next summer as well? I'm still having that conversation with your colleagues. I'm, I'm, I'm unsure as to where we are with coverage next year.
See, I, I took the focus totally different as to the V O C C meetings. I thought the focus was on the money, because the commissioners were saying they're not funding anything. He was asking for more money than we really had and were going to get, and I saw the focus not on protection of children, but I saw the focus on how much money are we going to have to pay.
And that's why to, my position has been to not tell the sheriff where he needs to spend the money, but for him to tell...
Twenty-five.
Is right. And, and I thought that we agreed to one point one million, which was a significant amount over what our state funding is, in order to say, this is the model that he believes is necessary to keep our students safe, and we had exceeded that.
And it's not enough.
I, I think that the email and my discussion with the attorney was pretty clear regarding that there would be an issue with signing any agreement if that money is not... So I, I, and I spoke to the attorney yesterday, I said, obviously I need to discuss this with my board, because I don't know what good that would be to continue modifying an SRO agreement if that is a, you know, a stop, a dead stop to the law.
At the March agreement, though, at our March board meeting, when we funded the ninety-six thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents, and in the motion as it stated, that it was for five additional SROs through June thirtieth, that would add to the contract, and I actually, for some reason, want to say the contract says fifteen SROs. So this would add then a total of twenty SROs that we contracted through the end of June. Superintendent, you're saying that it ranges anywhere from one student to as much as, I mean, one school as, to as much as nine schools, and probably averages closer to seven. And we're only covering with the twenty that is funded, we're only covering sixty-five percent is what I believe we're being told of coverage.
That's what they've scheduled to cover?
That's what's scheduled.
You've got to confirm if they're actually coming on those days.
And my feeling would be is I am happy to pay. I am happy as a board member for us to pay the twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-one cents that our schools are covered. But, but we can't pay for something that's not being done, especially if there's, in theory, twenty on the payroll, and, you know, granted, we understand what it's like. We've got summers, people taking vacations, people having to do, but we still have to cover those schools every day. You still have somebody in our schools every day in leadership, even though we have people taking vacations, because we can't keep those campuses unexposed. We have the same management issue. What is the schedule for summer after July one? Because the contract, new contract begins July first. What is our, what's the schedule?
Probably might be approved by July tenth, if you're correct.
Right. But what is the summer schedule after July one?
We need even less in July than we did in June.
Could you come on up to the podium, please?
It's kind of off the top of my head, but in July, we need a little less than we did in June. I believe the first week of July, we needed still seven schools to be covered. The second week, I believe we needed three or four schools to be covered, and then the third and fourth week, we've only got one school that's got something going on. That's off the top of my head.
I understand that the new contract was agreed, that payment's around ninety-two thousand dollars. Could you take roughly, yeah, take a roughly, it's more than one point one million, but it's all one payment, so it's ninety-two, something.
Okay, so the expectation we all have is the schools are going to be covered when students are at school. And I think to give Mr. Brad, what I'm thinking to give Mr. Bradshaw direction is we make sure that as a, the new contract, that that is expected starting July one of twenty eighteen, that that is why we have SROs on twelve-month contracts. And it's a simple management solution that I think can be worked through with the numbers that they have. Now, as far as paying the money, honestly, I know there's an argument that they need a good service, so let's not pay them the money, but I would just as much rather pay them the money that we said and make sure that takes place. Make sure, though, that they know that that is what we require and that they're, it's totally clarified as a July one, twenty eighteen, in the next contract, that there's no communication problems, that's what's expected. Now, that's just my idea, so board, obviously, you guys can bring up some other thoughts on this. This part.
I'd like to say that in the, in the interest of caring for our children, we'd like to have protection whenever there's a child, our parents. That's us. Crazy people come out in the summertime, and they're going to be protected from them. It's fine. You can put that in here if you like to. We also, we also, you know, that, that we, we're talking about summer school specifically because the kids are in the classroom, but we talked about this earlier, because we have kids on our campus. I know at the high school level, they're there every day. They're band campers, there's RO, there's, there's, so I kind of think we can say whenever there are kids on campus.
Kids start at school.
Kids start at school. But I still have a problem with, with him asking for more than the one point one and the ninety-two thousand, five hundred and six thousand, sixty-seven cents per month. And then we look at what, how many they're working in the June and July, and paying ninety-two thousand, five hundred and six for seven schools for one week, four schools for another week, and maybe one school for two weeks.
It's two separate, it's two separate agreements.
Yeah.
There's the, you know, the numbers fall too close together with all of this, because we see, which you have from the March fourteenth, I believe, it was board meeting through June thirtieth, and that was really, you know, the law got passed, the sheriff put five additional SRO, you know, deputies in the schools, this board voted to pay half, it lost, it roughly happened. Then we came into negotiating what we're going to do starting, starting July one for all of next year. And that's, you know, we came to a number, it's a little more than one point one million, you divide it by twelve, and you're going to pay that, you're going to pay that amount out every single month, which is fine. I think the expectation is, though, that there will be some coverage for that, for that amount of money. And it, you know, it's, even though there will be less SROs working during June, July, there's, the money's going to be the same, but we have agreed that that's the, that's the coverage that we agreed to.
That's the same with our teachers. We paid them for a hundred and sixty days, we spread it over twelve.
First thing we need is direction for, for the month of June. In May, like Mr. Dodd said, it's more twenty-seven thousand, we're paying for, when they were there, that's what we need, correction first, if we're looking for a model contract.
I think they have to tell Ms. Cernich how, how many hours they provided service, and then we'll pay for those hours, but we're not going to return the twenty-seven, we're going to still want that money back.
You're going to say the percentage of...
Yeah, if they work, we'll pay them for what they work, but if they didn't work, then we're going to wind up with an audit problem later. We've already gone into our reserves, which is going to reuse our, our school effective. And so then if we come up with a bomb audit, because we paid for services not rendered, our job is to be good stewards of our tax dollars money.
Is it possible for us to pay them the twenty-seven five, just for simple reasons? And if we find out that it is less than a hundred percent coverage that in July's payment, it can be reduced at that time?
I think, Wes, you may disagree with me, I think you're, you're covered under, even with the twenty-seven. If you did the twenty-seven, as Mr. Dodd suggested, I think you're covered right now, because there's not a contract that says anything other than that, and there is a degree of service that's provided. The argument is whether it's a hundred percent of what we thought we were getting and what they thought they were providing. So I mean, what, I think what Mr. Dodd's saying is, okay, if there's a misunderstanding this month, then let's get it worked out, but for July, make sure there's no misunderstanding. This is what the expectation is.
And I, and I tend to go along with that.
I think the audit part, we could probably write that up.
I still have to believe that this is a misunderstanding, because I thought the sheriff was very clear that he wants his deputies on the campuses when there are students in school. And there are students in school in the month of June and July. And so with that, I, I can be agreeable to us releasing the twenty-seven five and saying that, that I have to believe there's a misunderstanding, but you will, because you are going to have to put on there every day that there is kids in school.
And, and that's the issue, the issue for July is the, is the dates that this summer has been provided, they're offering less services in July than what we're provided with in June. So that's, that's to be worked out yet, and hopefully we can get that worked out.
Because so far, they have said, we cannot cover everything you're asking for in July, unless, unless they change their stance, that's what they've said.
So, I mean, I guess the conundrum is that if you pay the twenty-seven today, it doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get full coverage in July. We're still arguing over the July coverage.
Which would be a different contract.
Well, it would be a different contract, we're still working on it. But I have, I mean, it's been, the issue of summer school is probably one of the major issues that...
It, it doesn't make sense, and again, I, I can be agreeable to the twenty-seven five, but it doesn't make any sense going forward if we have a twelve-month contract with the sheriff's office, and this would now be for twenty, how many is, with next year's? No, next year's.
Twenty-five. We'd have twenty-five, which would be twenty-two, twenty-two schools covered plus three.
So on January and July one, two thousand and eighteen, we'll, we will have contracted for twenty-five law enforcement officers, and you're saying this, this, what the sheriff's office is saying is they cannot provide, for a twelve-month period, they can't provide anybody in July in the current funding schedule.
They can provide some in July, but just not full coverage.
But they're not, but, but the entire reason we did this was for full coverage. That was the entire purpose of this.
I think our interest is then to protect children, hold on, it's still us.
And also, you mentioned about from bell to bell, actually, teachers arrive half an hour early, they're half an hour later.
Yes, but the, the contract that I had sent was that their, their, their hours, or they have to be there with instructional personnel to arrive, you know, this business.
So that would be half an hour early.
Whatever instructional personnel, so I know that maybe some of us, I can probably help with that.
I'm, I'm willing to do this and to, to get through the first part of this, and that is to make a motion that we release the twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-one cents to the sheriff's office for coverage of our schools in June, as was originally voted on, on March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Just for that purpose, I mean, for this, for that part of the conversation, so that would be my motion. My comment only would be, before somebody seconds it, is that it would be my intention that what we voted on in one point one million dollars for twelve months will include coverage for all the schools while students are in session first, and from July first all the way through, July first, two thousand and eighteen, through all the way through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
But I would make a suggestion, if you're going to do that, you're basically saying that we're going, that whatever the coverage was in June, we're going to pay for it, you know, we'll just go ahead and go do that. I would make a contention upon the assurance that, that the contractual assurance of summer school is going to be covered in July.
And, and that's how I would make the motion, that we pay, the motion is twenty-seven thousand, five hundred...
Yeah, twenty-nine.
That's correct. Twenty thousand, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-one cents released to the sheriff's office for payment in June with the assurance that coverage for summer school continues and that, that a payment is contingent.
Contingent upon it being the contract, the eighteen, nineteen contract that summer school will be covered, which starts July first, July one.
In the one point one, in the one point one. And that's...
And the money would not be released until that agreement is in place.
All right. We were, we were, I wanted to make sure the motion, I thought we're on the same page. All right. Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Bryant, to pay the twenty-seven thousand, five thirty-one, thirty-one to the sheriff's office for the month of June, contingent upon a clear direction in the next contract, the eighteen, nineteen contract that specifies SRO coverage, full coverage while school is in session, anytime, yeah, anytime school's in session, including summer classes. Is that right, Mr. Bradshaw?
I, I, I'm ready to answer.
I've got another question.
Was there's other issues in the contract?
No, I understand that, but I'm just talking about this part.
I have problems with other issues in the contract that I'm, I'm, I'm...
Okay, so you, you wanted to bring up another issue in the contract, right?
Right, so I, I'm, I'm sure I approve of this contingency going to the twenty-seventh.
Okay, so, Mr. Bradshaw, we do have a motion to second on the floor. I know there's more to discuss about the contract, so should we go ahead and approve this mo-, or vote on this motion, then come back to the other issues or...
I think that, I think what it is, is that there's some other issues that I'm discussing with the sheriff's office. I mean, I think it needs to be contingent upon the summer school definitely being covered starting July one, and the execution of the SRO agreement, because I, I don't, I don't think you have the gift of money unless we have an executed SRO agreement with, with the sheriff's. And then, and, and not for that, I think you need to be very clear on what you say and how it's worded, so that there's no misunderstanding.
And the motion, you're saying?
I think, you know, I think that the motion, if, if, what Mr. Kennedy said was that willing to pay the twenty-seven, whatever it was...
Right.
And have it contingent upon full time, full coverage starting July one for summer school and all other schools, regular school sessions through June thirtieth of two thousand and nineteen, and the execution of the SRO agreement. and all other schools, regular school sessions through June 30th of 2019, and the execution of the SRO agreement by all parts. The county's going to sign it because the money's flowing through them, they don't care. But we need to make sure that, you know, we're not piecing that together.
And that, and that is what I'm saying is my motion.
And I still have other issues that are not, I think the other issues.
I just didn't know that they were germane to the, this particular part of that. But I definitely thought we needed to have a conversation about that. But I just thought as far as what I'm willing to say, that we should, you know, pay on, is, I didn't think that they were germane to that part.
It was truly the last time we all sat there and all of us.
I did this.
Five of us heard what was being said, we thought the sheriff and the board agreed, everything was fine. Never expected anything that's happening right now. So, so I think that's one of our concerns, to make sure we get it totally clear, as clear as clear can be. I don't, I don't, I'm, I still am stuck on the fact that it doesn't come down to making sure our children are safe and they're in protection in school. It always comes down when there's a misunderstanding with the money. And so, you know, I just, I took the 96,359 and I just took the days from March until the end of June. Came out to 178,44 cents a day. And if we didn't get that service in June, I have a problem with this man just saying, we're mandated, we've got to do something. He knows we've had to do something. He backed us up on every negotiation where we're running out of time to come up with any other alternative. And now he's demanding full payment of the 27,000 back. I'd rather see a bill of flowers for June and pay that bill.
Well, the thing of it is, Sandy.
I know.
We all have been quite a bit of hard ones.
Well, but I, send us a bill, we'll pay it.
Obviously, there was some confusion here. I think they thought we were trying to, trying to do his job.
No, I don't, I don't see a confusion. He, he sends us, he, we asked for this service, he said this is what we would pay for. He did not give us the service.
That's true.
So if he wants to bill us for whatever he provided for us in June, we'll pay the bill. But it's certainly not going to be 27,000.
All right, well, we do have the motion and the second. So Ms. Counsel, I appreciate your discussion. I would like to just ask for other discussion, mother board members, as far as this motion. You know, one of the things that I would like to ask superintendent is, we still have this week. And if we're saying that we're going to give you money and then at July 1, we're starting something different. I mean, in my view, we're really not starting anything different because it was what I agree on from the very start. Right, I think Mr. Kennedy, that's what we all kind of agreed to, that we're still, we're going to pay the 27,000 to get us through June. He still has to cover this week. I mean, that's my view. It's his responsibility right now as the sheriff. And after seeing the work that we've done and the intention, I don't want him to miss the larger concern of students' safety. You know, that's what we want. And so I think that this week in June, this search, are we covered this week?
We'd be a little hesitant to talk about that in a public meeting because it could jeopardize safety in our schools. So I would, I would certainly defer to Mr. Bradshaw on that. But if we say where coverage is or isn't, or if there's a place where we don't have coverage, and I'm not saying there is, I think that would jeopardize the safety of our schools. Yeah.
But yet, Major Luthard has mentioned that they are, they are covering the safety of the schools for summer school. Isn't that correct, Bill T? As far as assigned?
The answer is not fully, but nothing, they haven't answered it fully.
Well, the quote that I, that was is we definitely, it said, we are definitely giving the schools coverage for the summer. We feel it's the right thing to do. That was what he said. It did, yeah, did not specify the amount of coverage. It just said coverage. And earlier though, I believe in the article, it said that they would not require that they, that he would not discuss what, where coverage was for security reasons.
All right, we have a motion, a second, and.
And just so you all know where Mr. Kennedy's getting the number from. They sent us, she sent him the schedule, school, summer school is out. They sent us a schedule and one day we couldn't do it. That's how she, that's what I, it was like done separately, doesn't it? Done in cooperation with each other? No, right.
But if we have the expectation that the schools are being covered, I mean, that's.
I, I always thought that was the expectation. I didn't think that was, had changed in many quarters.
Yeah, we didn't have any concerns, because I think we were totally covered and all these things. So now where is this?
And the argument in the room is that the SROs that were working in our schools have been reassigned to different areas. They're not available to us. That's the end of it.
Was the sheriff, somebody?
They knew, they knew about the meeting that was scheduled.
So they, they did know.
They knew.
They knew the meeting that we've been to. I, I think there's still, and I, I don't disagree with Ms. Counsel on this. There are still some issues within the contract for the 2018, 2019 school year that we have to, to address. I just don't know, Mr. Chairman, whether you want that to be part of that, the vote, the conversation before the vote on this?
Well, that's why I said it needs to be contingent upon.
And that's what I thought, but I just wanted to know.
The, the other issues that, without getting in, you know, into, into all of that, I think that the summer school issue is probably the major one. I think the other issues was a little give and take in the book now.
Do you feel a little biggie in that?
Well, yes, according, because I just, I mean, some of the other issues are, you know, we want to call the school resource deputy, it's going to be a long history that we have of the SRO program that we have. You know, some of the, the reporting requirements are a lot of time. And I also understand trying to work with that and trying not to manage as people, because it's not what we want to do. We also need to protect ourselves from the archipelago in regards to making sure the services. You know, there's a couple, a couple other little things that I, I think that I can work those out. And if not, I'll be right back, sit here and work. This was the ultimate, I, I knew I had the session and then the, the summer, making sure we were clear. Summer school, which I've been very clear with them, that was our expectation. So we may not have much to talk about after the Saturday. I just need a direction.
70, but I'm kind of perplexed by that. 70, 26 refers to school resource officers in statute. So I would think that's what we have to, that's what we were referring to in our contract.
That's the way we refer to it. The other thing that I think was lost in the discussion of, of the rationale that was that, I think we started in 1985, 84, with the SRO program, probably one of the first in the nation. We have, we're nationally recognized and, and we've been for five years, it's weird. And so we have always had a school resource officer. In addition to the statute indicating it's a school resource officer, I think there is a tradition and a history of this now that goes back, you know, for a long time. Honestly, you can call it deputy, whatever you want to say. Call it a school resource deputy if you want to call it a school resource deputy. But the statute is, is for a school resource officer.
It actually says requiring a school resource officer.
Yeah, I think, I think that's not the issue. Yeah, that's not, you know, it's a school resource officer program. You know, that's what we always talked about, that's what we all agree to. I mean, you know, that's, in every discussion we've had in a public meeting, it's the SRO program. Right, so if you want to call him something else, a school resource detective, or a school resource officer deputy, or whatever, then that's up to the sheriff. I don't have a, I think you can call him whatever he wants, it's a school resource officer. Okay, so there is a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on motion? Are we clear on, on what Mr. Kennedy's motion is? That we improve the spending of the full 27,000, 27,531 dollars and 31 cents to pay for this month of June, contingent upon the understanding, the full understanding, that starting July 1, 18 through June 30, 19, contract year, that the contract will specify full-time coverage whenever school is in session with an SRO there.
Yes.
And that the other, and contingent upon the, the other parts of the contract being approved. Is that your?
Contingent upon everybody executing.
Executing the contract. And, and that's the second that I believe, who's the second, this morning?
Yes.
This morning, is that your understanding too?
Yes.
Do you think, okay, so we're clear on the motion? All right, so last.
You're satisfied that the words, the, the motion can't be, again, explained in three or four different interpretations?
I think it's very clear. We're only paying the money, if we have full coverage, July 1. I think the other part of money, executing the contract also means that we're not paying the other smallish. I, I, I feel pretty good about it.
And you feel that this full coverage is clearly clear?
Well, I understand, yes, I think it's all made it very clear that when school is in session or there's regular session of summer school, we'll be able to.
That's clear on it in my mind. We're not going to pay the 7,000 until we get everything else in place.
So that's the motion.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments about the motion? All right, all those who agree with the motion, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, we have one nay. Motion passes four to one. Okay, Mr. Bradshaw, is there anything else you need to talk about with that? Okay, all right. All right. I will ask for a sense of comment again. I know it's not on the schedule, but I do try to take that to the end of regular business of the meeting. So is there any sense of comment? Anyone want to approach the podium for comment? Okay, seeing none, any other business that needs to come from the board? Board members? Just to let you know, after we do this section, we're going to take a break and then we'll come back for the workshop topics, but.
Don, I just wanted to, I just informed today that micro school will close this year.
Oh, wow.
The board voted to disband it last weekend, so they're going to be working through that process.
Wow, that's a shame. And the teachers that are there will they come back into our system or no?
They will, they will not our teachers. Students will come back to us. But most of those.
Some of those teachers may have gone.
So, Mr. Rollins, so as of this coming school year, there will not be, I mean, micro school, are there still programs going on there now?
No.
Okay.
We will, we will work with them, Mr. Rollins will work with them. I'm watching when students that are eligible will come back to our school system and get that opportunity to learn.
Did they say why they were doing that?
Funding and enrollment.
They had a conversation this morning with the government, so I think they, the others will close by.
Okay. All right. This morning?
I just briefed out San Fernando Elementary School yesterday into strategic planning. And it was so good until everyone engaged, one of our students discussed mental health. But I mean, they were all sorry, so, so the others, the job I go to, I expect you know this.
I had a good time in camp. I'm glad to bring the, the Sandyville promise to the board. And I went to the Florida County Commission of State, saw that we handled kids, get their certifications for their campaign on keep our litter off our street. They were a good group of kids, well represented, the kids of our high school, so that was good.
The only thing I did want to say is I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we did have the county commission support us in the school resource officer program, support the community, right? Because it really is a community effort. And the county commission did come, step up to the plate. We're very appreciative of them for what they've done to the school resource officer program. Okay, all right, with that, I am going to, I'm going to adjourn this special meeting and we'll have a 10-minute reset, or break.